This is November twentieth. And it is six o'clock and it is the Groton Board of Education Committee of the whole meeting. And our first order of business is I'll take a motion to accept the November thirteenth meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, William. I have a second from Dean. Are there any? Are there any questions or concerns or discussion?
Just a question. The special meeting after this week, last week, does that also go, those minutes come out? I come up with some every once in a while. I'm going out.
You're right, because then we just.
They'll appear, Kim, they'll appear with next week's minutes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Joan.
You're welcome.
It's so good to hear your voice.
Thank you. It's good to hear everybody's voice there.
Yeah. Missing you, lady. All right, so if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of approving November thirteenth meeting minutes, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Um, abstain, thank you, abstain. Hearing none, that motion has occurred. I went into like, I went into a blank hole. Welcome to my world. All right, so the next thing that we have on our agenda is the review of grants. And just to remind the Board of Education that this is actually comes off of our tracking sheet. Um, where we, um, uh, at least once a year, really hear about all good things grants and all good things. Shannon, you are a amazing woman when it comes to that. And so at this point, I am going to turn over, um, to Shannon and, um, Susan, uh, to kind of lead us in this discussion about the grants.
So, um, I know you've heard a lot about our most recent competitive grants. There are federal grants that have been awarded. We've had additional ARP-ESR funds because all of that funding was not spent, so we've been offered additional funding for, um, different initiatives, um, so that we've gone after those and, um, Shannon's gonna give you some details on those. She really, she enjoys kind of divides a template that we keep up with on a regular basis. And the first area is on federal and state grants awarded to Groton Public Schools between really June twenty twenty-three and current. Um, and then there are grants that we've submitted, um, and we're waiting for the announcement pending. And then there are upcoming grants that we're investigating. And then there's grant funding that we've had and maintain and are continue to be in progress. So just to set the stage, you know, we also have those title grants and, you know, grants that are, grants that come to our town in the way of Title one, two, three, four, um, that we submit and we keep track of throughout the year. So there are a multitude of grants and we will be certain that when we, um, you know, bring the next budget proposal, we'll show you the grants and the revenues that come either directly to the town or to us in the way of grants. Yeah, so, um, like Susan said, uh, since the summer, we've been awarded, uh, four, um, ARP grants. They were competitive grants. Uh, two of them were for, uh, mental health. Um, initiatives related to mental health. One was to expand our, um, dual credit offerings at the high school. So we hired a project coordinator for that, Jasmine Zubeck, and she is, uh, started working on that. And recently, we received another ARP grant for a high dose tutoring program, uh, for students in grade six through nine. We're also in the process of hiring a coordinator for that program, um, so that's underway. Uh, we were awarded the, um, the DODIA grant again this year, a large five-year grant, um, which is supporting the, uh, continuation of our magnet programs at the elementary level and also, um, the work we're doing in literacy and all grade levels. Uh, let's see.
Can I just, can we just pause for just a second? All of our salaries for, when you say that we're gonna hire coordinators, the money comes out of, you write that position in the grant, is that correct? That we're not talking about, I, I know that, but I'm just making sure that people know that.
Yeah.
That, that it's not gonna be part of your personnel that you then have to find salary for once the grant goes. I'm pointing to Lori, for those who don't know, they can see that she's on there, but rather it, they're tied to the grant and their salary is written into the script.
Right, and they're, and they're, yeah, and they're part-time positions, usually stifened in positions, um, ten, five to ten hours per week typically.
Beth?
So you saying that once this grant runs out, that the people we're hiring under this grant, we will no longer have as employees?
Actually, Beverly, many of them are already our employees, uh, but they're working additional time and they're provided a small stipend for that extra work. And when the grant is done, they no longer receive a stipend.
Okay. All right, that's good to hear.
Yeah. Yeah, it's assumed that when the grant is done, the project will be completed at that point. Um, so we.
Are you taking questions now, or you, uh?
I was just gonna share a little bit more about the grants that we applied for over the past year. So we did apply for, um, three security grants, uh, two through the state, um, and one pretty significant one through the Department, US Department of Justice. Uh, these were to pay for equipment and services related to, uh, safety and security for the district. We received one of those grants, um, which it, we had also applied for funding through the town CIP program, which we were awarded. So the grant that we did receive will, um, supplement those efforts. So they can still move ahead, but unfortunately, we did not receive the federal grant or the second state grant, but we'll be reapplying for those, um, in a different context this coming year. We learned a lot about, um, how we could do those differently going forward. A couple upcoming grants that are exciting, uh, are two farm-to-school grants. Um, one in particular, over two hundred fifty thousand that we'll be applying for. Uh, rumor has it, the commissioner had us in mind when they put the RFT together. So, um, Ernie, I've been working with Ernie Koschmeyer and we're working with a, um, nonprofit organization called Level International, which creates, um, sustainable hydroponic systems. We already have some of their products in place at the high school. Um, they're a really interesting, um, nonprofit organization. They're doing a lot of work at, um, Hartford Hospital and throughout the state, uh, creating hydroponic systems for school districts, hospitals, um, other, uh, social service type organizations. So that grant is due December fourteenth. Um, and if we're awarded, it'll support a hydroponic, it's a hydroponic system for Thames River Magnet School. And then there's a second, uh, farm-to-school grant that's due in mid-January and Ernie is looking into, um, possibly installing in Orchard, um, somewhere on the Groton campus. So he's researching that and, um, that could also potentially support some additional farm-to-school, uh, part-time positions. So that's what's on the horizon. Uh, our after-school grant that we received to expand the center at the high school is finishing up this year. So, uh, Dan Couture has been running that program and we're just looking at the final expenses for that program and trying to figure out what we need to do at this time to sustain some of that work going forward.
And it has involved lots of our kids after school that wouldn't ordinarily participate. There's a lot of outreach to kids who weren't always attending and who needed a little boost and, and a little more belonging to the school. And it's certainly done that. And he's created many other after-school opportunities beyond sports and music and the typical, you know, robotics and the things kids love to do. And so we've seen as a result, more engagement for our students.
But that's going away.
It ends this year.
It does, and this year.
We're hopeful that there could be another.
Yeah, so we're gonna look at our enrichment funds and some of our other, um, funding and see what we can support going forward and what we might need to find additional grant funds or other funds for.
For instance, at the middle school, they have an after-school program, Twenty First Century.
Yeah.
And we've applied for, uh, an updated one and we've received that.
Yeah, so that, that, um, funding opportunity will be open again pretty soon, so we could apply for that for the high school too. Anybody have any questions?
Beth?
Thank you, Kim. Um, I, I have a question. Um, for the farm-to-school grant, the one to expand the farm-to-school program, and it's gonna, um, be used to support two coordinator positions, why do we need two coordinator positions? And how much are each of those positions gonna cost us?
Yeah, a good question. Um, so when the farm-to-school program started at the high school, we had, uh, someone who was partially supported by, um, Ernie's program and partially supported by Food Corps, that was Emma Rotner, who, um, you know, worked with the community, um, leading after-school programs, um, but now Emma went and got her teaching certificate, which is wonderful, and she's now in the schools as one of our magnet coordinators. Uh, Ernie hired, um, Bill, who has been doing a lot of maintenance of the, um, of all the different systems. Bill could use a little more support and, um, we're also looking to bring in another Emma. So doing another partnership with Food Corps.
So these Food Corps experts, they not only work during the day with kids, but also after school. And the piece, Beverly, that I really appreciate is the family engagement. So not only cultivating the foods, having recipes, I know she did a lot of work around preparing meals and then inviting families and kids to participate in that meal. So I think having someone, and that's all supported by the grant. It's actually part of what we're trying to accomplish in this grant and what the grant is kind of looking for from us.
And one more question, could you explain what is a hydroponics shipping container? What is that exactly?
Uh, it's a great question. Um, I'll do my best to explain. So, um, so it's basically, uh, growing leafy vegetables that grow primarily in water. Um, so they use, uh, plastic PVC tubing and I think they fill it with water and then they place seedlings in it and then you get, um, many, many heads of lettuce, which we then use to feed our, yep, feed our kids here at Groton Public Schools. And Ernie has distributed some to families at the, he uses it during his summer program and, uh, distributes it to families in the region.
We actually have hydroponics happening at Fitch High School.
Yep.
I see Dave, our student rep, shaking his head.
Yep.
And you'll find it at the grocery store. My favorite is bib lettuce. And you can see the roots are wrapped around and it's been grown in water. Yep, so.
Yeah, it's, it's very, it's highly efficient and kind of the wave of the future, especially in urban areas. So this system will predominantly be a teaching tool, um, but also able to produce quite a bit of, um, produce, including herbs and other types of new vegetables.
And, and one more question, what exactly do you do at the Fitch High School After-School Center?
Oh, wow. Um, well, uh, last year, they had over two hundred kids involved. Um, so Dan, this grant has helped fund, uh, positions, supplies, um, for, I think about fifteen different activities and clubs there, um, including a pottery club, a therapeutic art club, um, the Black Student Union, um, mindfulness, uh, strength training, um, it supports some tutoring that's happening up there. Um, and then it supports Dan's position and he's really been able to kind of get a handle on, um, what are all the opportunities, you know, really, um, kind of maxing out the potential there for after-school programming for students.
Yeah. It seemed, it seemed by a, a lot of athletes, it's an amazing time, uh, when you have a practice that may not start till three thirty, three forty-five, but school is out at a little after two. And you don't have a ride home and you can't make it back in time, whether it's parents working or you don't have a car. Usually, if it's used wisely, I will say, because not everybody chooses to use it wisely, but if it is chosen wisely, um, it's a great time for kids to get homework done before practice and have a place to stay that's warm, that's not outside, and so, uh, their time slot.
Is that esports happening?
Oh, yes, the esports.
Esports is a very popular club.
Yeah, I think there's about thirty students participating in that regularly now.
So do you think that you're gonna, so this is that, um, actual school?
Yeah.
Um, is, and that two hundred seventeen that would go back to kind of continue to support. And when will you hear about whether?
Oh, about the new opportunity?
Yeah.
Uh, probably not till next summer. Whether we're awarded or not.
Okay, but do we have enough money to finish off the school year? Is there?
We do, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so the main thing going forward for next year, we'll, we'll need to discuss how to support a few of the positions. So all the, the clubs have been outfitted with supplies, um, new systems have been put in place, so those are all set for now.
So this is it. Hey, I mean, please don't think I'm knocking. I think that this is wonderful and that this is a place for kids to be. But this is one of the positions where we could have, we could be adding staff to the roles. Right? If, once the event is over.
I mean, we're talking about stifened in club leaders.
Okay.
Not full-time.
Okay.
So it's just, you know, reevaluating the priorities and figuring out supporting those club leaders after school.
All right.
Official grant fund.
Yeah, so that would mean, sorry, I don't, I'm not trying to like, I just figured that.
It's not full-time position, these are club leaders.
So that would have to mean that the board would need to open up the student, uh, the teacher contract to go back into the stipends?
Or we would get a grant to support it.
We'd get a grant. Okay.
Yeah. That's what we're gonna want for.
Okay. I.
I have another question too. But I'll wait till everybody else has a chance to ask their questions.
I, I, um, I'm gonna look one more time, but Beth, it looks like you and I are the inquisitive ones tonight. Um, is there anyone here that's in the room that have more questions? Anyone else online? That would be, um, Andrea or Jay or William about any of the grants?
No, very informative. Thank you.
Beth?
Okay, thanks again, Kim. Um, for the high-dose tutoring grant, uh, how many tutors are you talking about? And can you give us a timeline on, on, um, what do you think you would hear from the other grants that you submitted? And my last thing is, thank you very much.
So the high-dose tutoring program, um, has started or is starting very soon, um, and it runs for about a year. Uh, so all grant funds need to be spent by January of two thousand twenty-five. Um, I think we're hiring six to eight, six to eight tutors total for that grant.
Great.
In math, yes, so it's for math specifically. Um, when will we hear about the other ones? Let me see. Probably not until the, probably not until the spring. As far as, um, the farm-to-school grants, uh, the after-school grants. That's all that's pending right now or upcoming.
Just to clarify, you said that those positions were stifened over those salaries with the tutors? Or they're just the additional hiring on? These aren't people that were taken from our own system and giving stipends to them, tutors? This isn't like, like example, Mrs. Oberini, my math teacher, she would become one of these teachers, these would be outsider tutors who would be brought in.
Yeah.
Additional, sorry, thank you.
Members school and during.
Yeah, that's true, that's true too, the way you look at it.
It's cool.
Right, because I, I thought about the leveling field. If you have people who are coming in after school, you also utilize your in-school teachers as well.
Yes, you're right.
Okay.
Good question. We've even contemplated a Saturday school. But I, you know, that's something kind of unique, a half-day Saturday school.
Matthew?
Um, I, under, I've heard that there was another grant coming for Ernie for a, uh, processing unit. So we could, uh, flash read stuff. Is that different or is that embedded in the?
That is different, yeah. Um, I just didn't mention it, but we received that. Yeah, I think they put this in order.
Yeah, because I actually had to go through, um, that had to go through the town council and the RTM. If the, if, um, by town charter.
Right.
If we receive more than thirty thousand, I think thirty thousand, um, by grant, we have to, um, we have to go back into our fiscal, um, our, uh, we have to go back to our fiscal bodies, which is the town council and the RTM for approval of anything above the thirty, is it thirty thousand or fifteen thousand? But it's, it's in, it's, it's one of those two, I just get, I just can't.
Gotcha, thank you very much.
And that's for competitive grants, the ARP-ESR funds, those funds, federal funds that were designated for districts and there are funds that are designated for Groton.
That's a good point.
They might be competitive, you have to go out for them, but they still are designated, you get a certain amount.
That's a complicated allocation of funds right there.
It is, you have to keep good track of it. You don't have a lot of.
I, um, I, I do, I am gonna pause for just a second. I would love for you to introduce yourself because we do have, um, board members on, online. We have Beth, Andrea, William and Jay, um, and if you would just say hi, that would be really great.
Yeah, for sure. Uh, I'm a senior at Fitch High School. My name is David Hogito. Um, my interests are in economics and in foreign policy and I am very glad to be here to see how the, not the underworld of how Groton schools operates, but how the.
The oversight.
Yeah, the oversight committee, how the general oversight committee, how it works in Congress, it's all, it's, it's always interesting to see how the, uh, the formulative body is able to operate as fluidly as it is. And I, I have to say that it operates quite fluidly here and it's an amazing experience. Yeah, exactly.
And they joined Catherine, um, this weekend at the K-Caps convention on Saturday. We're great contributors. I had my superintendent friends from across the state coming and saying, wow, you have two awesome young people. And I think they said it even in front of, of YouTube. So we were really so pleased to have them join us and learn a little more. I think it's pretty exciting for you all too.
We were able to take away multiple opportunities from that. Um, I still haven't been able to get a chance to talk to Ms. Austin about it. This is news to her too, so if she looks at me with the desk there, I'll walk out. But we have been able to, uh, I've been in contact with multiple other student representatives from their schools. We met kids from all, all across Connecticut, from Southington to Hartford, the Colchester to everywhere. Um, to kind of come up with like a formulative idea of a think tank for us kids who aspire to, um, have an understanding or get involved in their Board of Education in ways that we can help strengthen not only leadership and other qualities that, um, are gained by having experiences such as this, but also by putting like-minded individuals together to figure out, okay, what's the consensus that we're feeling about blank across the state of Connecticut, right? How are we feeling? How is this impacting us? Which, I mean, we live in a very hectic, busy time at the moment. And I think that it'd be great to get a whole lot of people who are all doing a very similar task from wide backgrounds, multiple different schools. I heard from small schools, I heard from rich schools, I heard from poor schools, I heard from schools from all, like, everywhere. It was a whole smorgasbord yesterday. And to get feedback from all those people in the future would be influential with the things and the ideas that we could bring to this committee.
Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I, I'm gonna recognize Jay and then William.
Uh, yes, good evening. I also wanted to mention that he was at our finances facilities, uh, committee meeting last week. Um, and we had some very interesting conversations there. So we're looking forward to the, uh, participation of our student representatives. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
William?
Did you guys say you went to a K-pop festival this weekend?
Yes, yes. Anything else that comes out of her mouth is a lie. We went to a K-pop festival.
K-pop, K-Caps convention.
Oh, wow, because I'd wonder, my, my daughter was probably there.
I honestly, the music, the music was.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring us, I mean, I am. I am going to bring us back in, um, but thank you very much, Cape. I will never think of Cape again.
For the warm welcome.
It is, I'm glad that you were here, sir. Um, and just be, beware, our, we have a student, he was once a student rep when he was a junior, a senior in high school and he is currently now serving on the town council and was re-elected to the town council. So we, uh, we have a good track record here.
Dan Gieske and I have been running buddies since I was six.
Okay, great. All right, so I'm gonna move us on. Um, if there's no further question, oh, Beverly, I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm sorry, one last question. Um, the ARP-DU credit expansion grant, is that something that, um, we are going to continue? It ends in June twenty twenty-four. Are we gonna still try to, um, work with UConn and other Connecticut colleges? Or is that something that's gonna end once that grant ends?
No, that's just a good beginning, Beverly. It's gonna launch us into some new opportunities. So, you know, really providing credit for students. Um, we've already been doing that a little bit, so this gives us more, um, financing to kind of seek out, um, other opportunities and then continue the journey.
So are we gonna fund it through our budget or are you gonna apply for other grants?
I think the, can I speak?
Yeah.
The initial work is really just to do the coordination with the, with the universities.
Right.
Once that work's been done, the program will be established, the credits will be established. It's really like a one year to kind of get all of the pieces in order, if that helps.
Yeah, it does. Any more questions? All right, let's move on to the review of staffing and minority recruitment. And so.
Would you want to just place this on the screen? If you just want to speak to.
And you don't have to say. Yeah.
Don't leave.
You'll never get the offer.
That's right, that's it. One and done. That's why you were up on the screen. I am smarter than you thought.
I wanna hold on to this.
All right.
I know.
I'll do this again. I forgot him. When I went to advance, it went away. Okay. All right, so I wanted to take everybody to an update on, you know, what our, uh, diversity profile looks like, the work that's been going around as it can be. And then, um, kind of walk you through kind of the state, state of affairs, um, of what our future work looks like in that area. If I can advance these slides correctly. There we go. Uh, so, um, you, I, I sent this around, so I didn't realize it was a little bit talked to me on the screen, but, um, this is our, uh, current, uh, diversity profile. It shows kind of a, you know, the latest tally of where we are with our, working on our educators of color and our diversity background. So, um, I think you're all familiar with this format. It's a format we've been using for about four or five years now. But it basically breaks down our demographic profile by administrators, both district and school level, uh, general education teachers at each of the levels, so, uh, pre-K to five, six to eight, nine to twelve, um, special service providers such as school social workers, psychologists, speech and language pathologists, and then the non-certified staff as well. As you can see, we continue to grow with our non-certified, um, staff ranks with, um, our, um, you know, individuals, uh, with a diverse background, um, educators of color, um, and I'm gonna kind of advance a little bit because I'll speak a little bit more specific about the data results, um, as I move forward. But I just wanna, um, jump ahead a couple of slides here to give a little bit more context. So I did work with Lauren Cincini. She provided a breakdown of our current student demographic. So just for everybody's point of reference, fifty-three percent of our student bodies of color. Um, and then this is last year's demographic profile. I am gonna see to where it's changed coming up. Um, but I just, I dropped last, uh, year's profile in the PowerPoint for you, so you can access it. And then, so this is our current, um, progress. So we started tracking in this method back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And so you can see how the demographics have changed over time. and so you can see how the demographics have changed over time, so the current year um district wide diversity percentage is sixteen point one, the teacher diversity percentage is nine point nine, as you can see our growth over each year, we have been incrementally improving since we started, we're tracking prior to this and showing some improvement as well, but in this specific format, we started in the nineteen twenties school year, so each year we've been able to continue to see and sustain some um incremental growth in in diversifying our workforce. And as far as what the data tells us, you know, as we analyze the data that we had, one of our prior areas that we had less diversity was the elementary educators uh pre-K and five, and we've talked about that in prior presentation. So with our efforts in working with the teacher and residents program specifically targeting elementary teachers, that program is designed to bring elementary teachers of color into the organization, we've actually um seen a shift in that uh in that demographic, um but now it shifted to the middle school, so we've lost a few individuals at the middle school, and that has then presented with a situation at the middle school where you know, we're less, a little less diverse in the middle school now, in uh elementary has improved and Fitch High School has um sustained. Um, we continue to see uh very low numbers in the the non-instructional support staff, so that is your speech and language pathologist, counselors, um social workers, um psychologists, so we continue to see lower numbers there, um we have connected up with an organization um that we can, you know, do some outreach with specifically for um psychologists of color, so we'll work on, we continue to work on that. We have to continue to establish recruitment goals, aligning our workforce around our, you know, least diverse areas um amongst the national and state educator shortage, and I'll talk to that just a little bit. And and those are, um you know, I'll share some ways that we're doing that in the in the upcoming slide, but this year we hired five additional educators of color with an overall increase of three over last year, so you so you hire some, you lose some, there's kind of a continually shifting. It does say six in there, I did the issue of direction today, uh because we had uh one that was double counted, also I did update that. And I just wanted to share kind of for everyone, give a little bit of perspective, this is the state of Connecticut, their EdSite diversity dashboard, this kind of shows where we're trending statewide, um and kind of what that looks like. So, you know, you can see the same is same similar pattern, some incremental growth year over year, continuing to work towards, um I think they're right around eleven percent of so for the twenty twenty three school year, their current year results aren't out yet. But similar to us, they're on a similar pattern, which is you just wanna keep making that incremental growth year over year, which we strive towards. Um, I do wanna mention the national workforce shortage a little bit, uh because it is something that we're all struggling with, you know, we're struggling with it statewide, we're struggling with it nationally, um and the reason why I share is because certainly there's a lot of dialogue going on about this issue across the country when it comes to educators and how we're gonna bring more educators into the profession. One of the things that they actually specifically seek to is creating pathways to careers in education, which we have done. Um, we've been working on for quite some time, and we're seeing, you know, uh this wonderful new educational pathway at the high school, um which plays a role in that. And then also, um the next element of that work amongst a shortage is reduce barriers to careers in education while preserving standards of excellence, so some of our focus going forward is how do we reduce some of those financial barriers, so individuals who um need that support to get the educational requirements met so they can become futures in the future, so our non-certified staff, our Fitch High School students who are in the pathway. So that will continue to be some of our focus areas we move forward. Um, so some of our latest action plans um will continue to focus on the elementary development program, we're still continuing with the teacher residence that is proven to be successful. We have uh just recently joined this um HDCU recruitment, historically black college and university recruitment network. This network is significant, it's um it's a national association that we joined that basically um allows us, they have a K through twelve uh job outreach program, allows us to get all of our jobs out to about two million alumni and students across the HDCU, which is a source of black college universities, the Hispanic serving institutions, and the tribal colleges. So we have connected profoundly, started to get our jobs out across these channels, which will continue to help connect us with individuals both in-state and out-of-state. Um, and then continue to focus on diverse recruitment efforts, we have connected up with the local NAACP chapter, we share our jobs with them as well as the military liaison we've always shared with. Um, and then we are looking at, there's a couple uh programs right now at the state that are being explored, which we are um uh following and participating in the dialogue in, which is to reduce the financial barriers for tuition assistance for non-certified staff. So there is some talk at the state level in um having some of these future programs roll out, cuz some of the some of the focus that I have been focusing on is how do we provide some type of program to allow our non-certified staff members who don't have a bachelor's degree a path to a bachelor's degree, and then ultimately accelerated route to teaching. So several years for someone to get there, but certainly we're gonna help them get there. So that's one of then one of my focuses, and the state has come out and and indicated that they're starting to explore those programs and see if they can create them at the state level that we can then participate in, similar to like the teacher and residence program, um both participate regionally as well as throughout the state. Um, and then we'll continue to support the Fitch High School students involved in the teacher pathway.
Did we see this in effect last year with a student teacher in the physics department at Fitch? Is there was, I remember Mr. Chidley, I think the last half of the semester was taught by a student teacher who used to work for um some military contractor and now wanted to become a teacher, was on that accelerated pathway like we're talking about right now, is that related?
Um, it's a different program, yes, it's probably, that was through in what we call an ARC program, accelerated certification, yes, and we have those as well, yes, absolutely. Um, so uh going forward, these are gonna be some of our kind of focus initiatives beyond what we've already been doing, these are kind of some of the new initiatives um that we will um take forward, um continue to kind of move the work forward.
Lori, has the teacher and residence um program decided to move towards upper level teaching?
They are exploring that, they they actually have opened up special education recently, which is a new pathway for teacher and residents, and then um uh they've they've talked about expansion into math um and sciences. So those are coming as well, it really focused obviously on the shore of Jared.
And we have had some wonderful additions to the social work, Spanish speaking, you know, on Spanish, um and also um African-American Black um educators who have really been so responsive to community and helping existing students in their family.
So I'll answer questions if anybody has.
I'll recognize Beth.
Thank you, Kim, um Lori, on your action plans, um did you consider any incentives, or do you give any incentives to um get teachers to come up to Grotton, like um moving expenses, or I don't know. Cuz some school districts do do that, they give a signing bonus, or they pay for the moving expenses, what kind of incentives are we giving, if any?
Yeah, so that's a good question, but currently we're not providing any of the financial incentives. We have had success in recruiting at Howard University down in DC, we've actually hired a teacher from that recruiting event, so you know, I think it's individuals who have some connection to the area, wanna come to the area. Um, we've been successful in bringing some other locations, uh but not through financial incentives, not currently anyway.
So we um we hired one teacher from Howard University, you said?
We did, yes, last year, they're at the middle school.
Okay, and on your bullet that says find ways to reduce financial barriers, and you said you're focusing on that, what exactly are you doing?
That would be in the form of some type of tuition program, so whether through us or through the state of Connecticut, the state of Connecticut is exploring some type with accelerated either tuition assistance or accelerated uh on-the-job uh program, so it'd be one or the other, um but I would think mainly come through tuition systems.
And um another question I have, how many teachers of color did we lose? This year?
I believe.
Or last year?
I think it was three this year.
Okay, great, um do you know why they left? Did they go to other districts, or they got a better position?
I can check, Beverly, I I would have to just refresh myself with the actual names. Uh, but yes, I can find that out.
What I know is the military staff, so we do get that quite often, where they're military staff, and they're here for tour of duty, but when the tour of duty leaves, they have to leave, and I remember that was a tremendous loss for us in the school.
Yeah.
Lo- Lori, do you know if there's a decrease in the number of students that are majoring in education? And that's why um there's, you know, we're having such a hard time nationally finding teachers?
You know, you're talking about the educational, like the upper educational institution, colleges and universities?
Right.
Yeah, you know, those programs are, you know, um they don't, they're not seeing as much enrollment into those programs, that's.
Well, this was a problem we had for years, it's trying to find minority teachers, and I don't know. I'm not having much faith that we're gonna do much better than we're doing, but I'm just gonna try to stay positive with this.
It's all about incremental improvement, there's but there's no windfalls here.
Yeah.
Staying the bar, thank you.
I'm gonna recognize Andrea.
Lori, um I understand that there's going to be a CEI meeting, and I I'm hoping that I didn't miss it because of my illness, but is it, when is that coming up?
It's coming up uh the week after Thanksgiving, it's the twenty eighth or twenty ninth.
Okay, and will will the the committee that's meeting, will that address this issue in particular?
Yeah, we'll be sharing with the committee the presentation that the board has seen tonight.
And that's the committee guy I'm on, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, very well, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But Kim, can you have Dean speak in the microphone?
We we we're doing it, Beth, we're doing it.
I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start off slow. So has the district ever had an occasion to um ever been in a position where it's told somebody who is not, I'm gonna use the state's or the district's terminology, someone who is not of color, which is another way of saying white, if they returned away a white applicant because you were looking for somebody who was not white? And never held a position open, that's that's the vacant because of retirement or relegation, in order to say, well, let's wait until somebody quote of color come along.
Now, we don't.
Okay, so you don't do it by by attrition.
No, no.
The other thing I have to say, it's just sort of a commentary, the way this is phrased, and I don't know whether this is intentional or not.
We are, you see.
Right, a- anywhere, basically anywhere in this in this presentation, there are breakdowns by specific categories, it's not just white and non-white, it's white and others, but the the discussion, the topic very quickly turns to, for example, how many educators of color have we hired? And then it just doesn't seem to matter after that which one of the other groups they're in, as long as they're not white. If I was in the not-white group, I'd say, I see, so I'm just, I'm pretty much interchangeable with all of the other ethnic groups. That's the way that it would come across to me. But uh it just it just reads funny, so true diversity would be by all of our little buckets, that's exactly what our faculty would look like, not, well, we've got uh, you know, forty-nine percent or forty-seven percent of the kids are white, forty-seven percent of the teachers are gonna be white, and the other fifty-three percent could be whatever, they could all be Korean, but at least they're not white.
When we say mirror the community, we're talking exactly about what you're talking about, where you really try to get multiple ethnicities, multiple people that really mirror what our student population is, it's not an exact science, of course, but you do want that rich diversity.
I've got another question, the final one. It's not shown here, and it's not the not the topic, gender, how many ma- how many men, how many women in teaching, I'm gonna say without looking at it, that we're probably probably far more females than are males, who are doing the teaching, but what's our student breakdown, I'm gonna say close to fifty-fifty. And if that's the case, are we doing anything to address that imbalance, especially the primary grades? Little boys have just women to work, that's the concern.
Yeah.
I wasn't concerned about that in elementary school, but sounds like it should be.
Yeah, that was a fair question, Dean, it's not in the presentation, but you're absolutely right, diversity comes in many shapes and forms, gender is one of them. Having role models for, you know, you know, especially at the elementary level, male role model teachers, and we've done you know, considerable amount of work in that area and added quite a few male male elementary teachers over the years, so yeah, that's a fair question.
Is that gonna be, is that could be in another presentation like this?
Yeah, we could add it in. Yeah, that's a point, yeah, yeah.
And I would, my caveat to that, Dean, would be how many men to women in the um administrat- administration, I know that we have a female superintendent, but what is the ratio for Grotton in terms of um male administrators um to female administrators?
Absolutely.
That would be interesting, write down on that as well. Matthew.
I'd respond to you, Holly. From my perspective, this is less the color, race, height, weight, life, attendance, faculty, staff, then it is the education standard to the benefit. When you look at academic achievement, the directors for social, if you're doing consulting, your presence or absence of somebody who looks like you, something motivates you, not only in the immediate scene of the work, but also in the scene of future dreams of success and perspective, and it's backed up by versions to, it's backed up by the government, it's backed up by the National Association for Education. There are really good data sets to show that, so if the goal is to have people of color, it's not to have quota, it's not to have an absolute target, it's to make people living and to make our kids be successful. That's just, and and I'm not saying that you don't believe exactly what I'm saying, but I wanted to articulate what's my thing to.
But you go right back to my observation, which is the first important distinction seems to be whether you are of color or not, instead of, in other words, are you white or non-white? I would find that offensive.
It's the assumption that this district, if I had anybody who's not absolutely top drawer in poverty. How many left-handed people do we have, Lori?
I'm not saying that at all, all what I'm saying is, I I have no problem with the discussion, it's just about Asian Pacific, the 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 East Asians, Southeast Asians, it's all but very often, in terms of of color, quote of color, which is just another way of saying not white. So my my question is, if our focus is how many educators of color we're gonna hire, does it actually matter to us which color? Or is it sufficient to say, don't worry, they're of color? So we hired, we hired a lot of, quote, Hispanic teachers.
I'll say one more.
Is that okay?
We have so few, we have so few related to the number of students in front, which has gone from forty-eight percent who supported in the Bay in twenty twenty-one to fifty-three percent in two, two and a half years. Uh, what kind of trend that means for the makeup of the district by ten, fifteen years, so it's a very delicate balance, because speaking only to myself, speaking only for myself, I said it twice, so you need to understand it. To get a percentage To get a percentage. That's going to in any way resemble a current makeup, right along what it might be in the future. We could talk about many, many decades, so. I would just like to accelerate this process a little bit and be appreciative.
Just wanted to know what the national goal for.
Broke, probably got broke.
Yeah.
And great teacher.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping it is really in a festival, there's no doubt about it.
Are there any more questions? On this topic? Lori, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Quite frankly, I am going to do an ad addition. Go ahead.
No, I also wanna thank those, I know there are faculty members that are going out, colleges. Working with you, Lori, in your department to, I think it's all about raising the visibility brought. As as a place to come to and to reach out to areas we haven't reached out to before, and just casting a wider net. Um, so for everybody who's been involved with that, DEI committee and those who are actually out in the field.
And Lori's team has been everywhere, and we are going into the communities. Lori's team was with us when the Branson Mayor had their cookouts, we go to the Navy sites, we go to where are our families?
Well, libraries.
Go to and just it's outreach and sometimes it's like that starfish, it's one, one starfish at a time, you know?
Um, I I also just wanted to say, I really appreciate the board having this conversation and um. I guess maybe I'm a little bit nostalgic, but this is sort of what I love so much about working with and on the Board of Education. Is that we can have these hard conversations and we can have people shake their hands. Um, and also just do it and say, this is where I'm coming from, this is where I'm coming from, and recognizing that we all have a right to have a voice. We have all have a right to have a being and we can do it respectfully, and that's what we're supposed to demonstrate to our district, to our staff. And to our students. So well done. Thank you. Well played. Thank you.
So if there's no other um conversations, I would like to move us to Finance and Facilities Committee. And Jay, you came in just at the right time.
Yes, sorry.
So it's, I don't know how the two of you wanna tag team, tag team?
It's, this is all Dave's uh presentation. We were, we were privileged to 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 get this presentation in the Finance and Facilities Committee and uh.
Very thorough, very thorough job.
And I I I just wanna preface it by saying, um, I for one, and I'm sure the others on the committee and the board feel the same way. Are are very thankful for seeing this data sort of in a different way. Dave is bringing, you know, new ways to look. At things through his uh utilities dashboard, his health insurance dashboard. And this is more of the work that he's doing. He's even got ideas about better ways to showcase our budget, to be more. Um, explanatory and transparent during the budget process, so we're really looking forward uh to his new ideas. This is just a piece of stuff.
Um, yeah, and hopefully. Category down here, I'm not too surprised, but we've been talking about this for a while. I wanted to get on one piece of paper, the knowledge to look at to start to monitor consistently over the course of the year, so. I'll hit, I'll hit each one of the topics sort of briefly, ask me the first question, that's the part where the. Just as an example, you can put each one of these, so this is health period, you can put through and. One second or so, should bring up our dashboard, you know, just so you know that there is some data, sort of evidence behind each one of these.
Sure, it is.
So there's our healthcare dashboard, and each one, just about each one has. So let me just go back, so. I I think we started talking about this one month and a half ago, but how how insurance claims are certainly top of mind to us right now. Uh, we did get our recent look at health insurance claims for a month. And it was, it was more in line than what we had seen the first couple of months, that was positive. Uh, but we're still running about thirty percent over the same period last year. Uh, in addition to that, obviously, there was some challenges during the budget season, and the the budget itself would reduce. And are observed now above the corridor. And when I say nearly, it's it's just not as strong as it once was, I think it's somewhere in that million, million and a half. So um, you know, we're gonna have to watch this one, winter's coming, for the next few months or so, it'll be very important for us to. Kind of keep an eye on it. The second one is around our property costs. And I think we've talked a little bit about um. Some individual claims here, but let me just kind of bring it back, you know, there's six or seven. Home events right now that we're managing and monitoring in this, in this spectrum.
Unforeseen events, that we're not budgeted for. Like the floods.
A little small, but you know, the first. So the first two are claims that have been filed in our insurance carrier. They're just still TVD, this first pitch one, they're back yet. But just to ground you, the first column is really sort of gross estimate, total cost for each one of these. The town is contributing a little bit towards our deductible, and then just the river claim. And the final column here is what we're thinking is a good estimate for the mortgage cost. So, you know, roughly around a hundred thousand dollars of one budgeting cost. Uh, just to take it through, you know, we have the two for missing both water, we have the water. Um, clean, more recently, fish, we have some issues with HBC lines. Uh, we put the field house within. We gotta, we have to do sort of water feed it, show where it's pitched to. So the reason.
Things don't last like they used to, do they, Dave?
No, you know, the the reason this is forty is that it's not really gonna be insurance, but it's just a tieration of that. So it's just time to re- and we think, if it was two or three years ago, we had a replacement at about thirty six thousand, so we just put a. We go back, so the next is transportation. Uh, there there's a couple of ones, there we had a little mix. In the types of buses, that's a small delta force that was unbundled, but really the punchline here, you've already talked about this before. Sort of the cost for our, our athletic events. So um, just to reiterate again, there's this sort of multi-tier pricing here. When you're paying for mileage now to each one of the events, you're paying for hourly rate. Uh, and while, while the bus is at the event, the bus driver stays. So it's not a drop off and then I'll come back and get them fixed. So what we're starting to see now is what used to cost us. You know, one fifty to two fifty per event, but all, you know, we've got the twelve hundred dollars. We just had a football game at Killenley, that was twelve fifty. We had one at Woodstock, I think that was nine fifty. Uh, so I just had a meeting with, you know, the other issue to do was. The first round of invoice that we received from the bus company, uh, just wasn't satisfactory. It just didn't give us enough detail and evidence to support uh our payment for each one of the events. We had sat down with Mark and had Mark to do as well. I just had a meeting with the bus company last week. Sort of math on each one of the events. So how many miles are you driving, twenty hours with the, you know, the bus driver there, what was their total cost? Because it's the only way we're gonna be in the budget appropriately going forward. We know what a volleyball match costs versus football versus something at Woodstock, versus something. So they, they committed to go back and give us some more details on our. No, I told them, we're just, we're gonna hold off.
And was this in? Is this an oversight from the contract or is this, is this more of a typical?
And there is the increased cost, cost that I don't think there's cost to out to see what the effects is really.
Yeah, this is, you know, this is, in addition, like we have the rates. I think the standard loss is something like. Five or sixty, just, just these type of events, like athletic events and field trips. So you'll see this one, when we get in the budget, I have a schedule, I'll show you, you know, the cost of the the normal buses, the midday buses, late buses, special.
I'm gonna recognize Jay and then Matthew.
And of course, we also are dealing with the um CIAC, right? Reconsidering the schedules. Which will actually set up. So having more, no, hopefully explained better, I mean, more, instead of having, it's a local game, it's a more distance game. And uh, not to interrupt, but yes, um, it is not being received well by athletes, by student athletes, in particular being one of them. We hate it. We hate this redesign. We wanna be playing our friends that play, that live in like these rivalries of what we play the game for. When the, when our coach at the end of the season um talked to us about the discussion that they were having redesigning the state map. Redesigning the different classes that we would play in, requiring us to go to Danbury for a soccer match on a Tuesday night. Is a bit excessive when I have AP psych homework. And we left, as uh a lot of captains got together with the scholar and the student friend to say. If this is something that's gonna be happening, you don't have our seniors vote. We're leaving this building saying, don't do this. We're leaving this building with an affirmative vote that if there's anything to be done by any coach at this school or any school's near us that. There better be something done, because you're gonna be putting the wrong type of format in front of future scholarly athletes. You're gonna stop them, stop the incentive to play if this becomes such a gargantuan thing, such a time-consuming thing that.
So I I'm going to, um, I'm actually going to, thank you very much, um, but I think that this is probably an agenda topic. Um, in the future, um, to have Mark come and talk about C I C.
I'll make sure.
Mark has a seat at the CIAC, you know, leadership there.
So that's, um, but I'm gonna stay to the the transportation, if that's okay, but thank you very much. Matthew?
My question has to do with school field trips, which was a uh. A change into the new bus company, that's the most value neutral way of saying that. Um. Are we going to have, how, how does the figures that you're working on under this rubric, transportation cost? Does that take into account the question of uh field trips or is that just not?
It's a smaller scale, and so the bus company did give us.
It doesn't mean free classes, you can, if you're going to the aquarium and third to fifth grade gets to go, send them all and. And let them pay for all those buses. So principals have to be strategic.
Did you have a question?
No, I was, my, I was gonna have a comment that I was just believing that if this is what CIAC is doing. They're going to price everybody out of being able to play.
Yeah.
And what's the purpose of having high schools, sports, arts, and martial sports or any type of sport? If not to give people opportunity to play, and I think this is something where um superintendents need to get in there and say, uh.
So I'm gonna keep us on on to the finance, but thank you.
But that is kind of in the side way.
Yeah, you are. You are correct. Um, and I am going to have, um, I'm gonna request that um Susan puts on like for agenda for. And move forward to have the the conversation around C I C, when is that? All right, Dave.
Sure. Uh, so the next question, we'll put it midway down, as you told me. You've seen the dashboard, all the new ones from uh Monday for you. Not not, not much has really changed here, other than. Uh, we do have an opportunity in our national, our natural gas contracts to consolidate those. Right now, we have four independent contracts, the all the start date, the mandate, the pricing, uh, different levels. So we have an opportunity to spread now to, uh, I think a four-year deal, we could be about twenty eight thousand dollars saved in the first year. Actually, twenty nine thousand the second year. We could almost offset any volatility we've seen in third and fourth. But we also have some economies, right? Because now we're all on the same schedule, we're on the same terms, we're all on the same contract. So that's um, that just popped over on Friday, I got a chance to look at it today. Um, I feel pretty good about that, I haven't signed it, but I feel. Pretty good about that all.
Is that something that we would do with the town, with with the town?
But it's, it's much, you know, if you go four years out, it's much lower than the spot rate. The spot rate is sort of a commodity rate of the day, it's much lower. Um, lunch program. As of, you know, probably three weeks now, but we're averaging about eight thousand dollars, one base food lunch target per month. About sixteen thousand unit dates, and we're projecting that to be close to eighty thousand for the full year. Sounds like our our high-level marketing space is better off fifty thousand. Uh, but what Ernie's telling us is that, at least out of the gate, it's been a real challenge, and it's been a challenge primarily.
There in the non-C P P school, community eligible programs, so CB, NEA and Fitch High School. And I know that Ernie has been reaching out to families that aren't paying to notify and through Parents Square. Um, you know, and also encouraging them if they have the need to fill out the free and reduced lunch form. Because if it is a thing where they need that resource, they should be filling out the form so they can provide it. But I think the sense is that a lot of the folks um that aren't hanging the bell are the ones who really could afford.
And despite, you know, I know there's been some discussion in the community that, you know, children are not allowed to eat. The the lunch lines do not bring up the balance with the student, that the meal is given out. Whether or not there's, there's money in the account. I think where there's been some misinformation in the past is when, when a student wants to get. An extra. Like at the high school where they, you know, over and above the.
The lunch.
The lunch, the meal, they they want chips or whatever those extras are, and those can't be charged to. Correct. But the basic meal is, and it's everyone, and it is no different than any other student meal. They're, they aren't handed a brown bag with a, along with sandwich in it, or in any way pointed out that that their account is.
Thank you for.
So the next one, falls right down is around, you know, traditional contract, there's the wage inflation. Obviously, we have one agreement that's still in play, nearly, we're gonna do around six percent, but that's still a TVD. And then we'll, you know, we'll continually have minimum wage increases. I think we might be five years that. Structured increases, but now there's sort of a annual index assessment of all that. Which will be here, which is actually a little more challenging for us, because you don't know exactly what that number is going to be. So we're gonna put a placeholder in the budget to, um, you know, just to try to estimate, but it could be plus or minus. That the minimum wage has certainly been estimated over the last five years.
And just to add, if Dean, Jay, Andrea and I can meet really quickly um after this meeting, just to go over um. The to be determined um piece, that would be really great. So it's actually what I am gonna ask if people can. Um, vacate the space really quickly, because then we could keep Andrea on Zoom. That would be really helpful to us. Thank you.
Um, second to the bottom is around legal things. Schedule a month or so, you know, but, you know, smaller bucket, it's still something we're watching, because there's not much left here. Given negotiations and some of the stakeholders, we could burn free coming a thousand dollars in a brief, quick time. So again, considering it's only mid-November.
And when did that start off at?
Uh, seventy, seventy-ish, so. So the the last one on the bottom here, just some, some prior year expenses that, uh, you know, we really started the year with. And I'll work my way from the bottom to the top here. Obviously, we have the D O D supplemental, uh, the balance could be at risk depending. The balance could be at risk depending on, you know, how well we're able to cover some of these prior year expenses. You know, we traditionally always put our, our technology costs in that, which will hopefully be probably good, but that should be everything. Then the second one are really invoices that at $82,000 or so related invoices. Related to last year that we didn't receive until this year. These are vendors that did not give us invoices in a timely manner that were related to the prior year that we were unaware of. That we have to pay for now at this year. And then the top piece are really what 624,000 prior year expenses that we defer to this year. Simply because we didn't have the funds to pay the rest of the prior year.
Yes, of course.
Yes. So in terms of unpaid legal expenses that are, are not unpaid legal expenses, but just unpaid things that are being billed late. Is there a clause in a contract somewhere when they buyer and the seller opt into it with when we make these either purchases or we receive these products for these bills to be in like that? That should be more of like, I don't know, that just feels.
Is there like a contract? It's always the other way around, right?
Right.
You know, payments.
Yeah.
But not necessarily a commitment to receiving some of the. So, you know, this year we're going to change our position a little on some of these. You know, one is, you know, I've already talked to the leadership team here about getting some help and making sure we have communication out with all of our vendors that they have relationships with.
Yeah.
We're gonna start that process really early, probably in April, early May. So we can get a handle there. The other thing on the financial side. You know, we'll start to reach out to vendors as well as early as possible because, you know, some of the team, they understand what the commitment is. They might be understanding more on the financial side of this. So they'll go after it as well. You know, you know, this is one of those where sometimes you have to ask the question, you also have to tell.
Yeah, okay.
And so we, we know there's some commitments out there. There's some things and we have some clauses that should be met. You understand what those clauses are.
Thank you.
The third piece of that is, you know, we, we have accounting transactions. We can improve for some reason, but these are itself.
Yeah.
If we know ahead of time. You know, if you don't know, you've got some blind spots. You've got some information.
Yeah. My second part was just gonna be, are these estimated costs that we don't know the exact number that we're going to be billed for? Or are these like specific, we bought 100 textbooks. This is how much it's going to run us when this comes in.
No, it's usually, you know, the things you know, you can account for.
Right. Yeah, okay.
You know, how many students needed some help, how many students are being built, maybe maybe some specialized transportation, things like that.
Okay. Oh, right. We were talking about the, the curtain. Gotcha. Okay. I remember that much. Thank you.
Jay.
And of course, Dave started. For two months.
Yeah.
Would you?
How long is the field? I just to put it into perspective.
Right.
And because he's aware of this, you know, at the end of every year, there, there's always this rush with the incumbents. You encumber what you know. And then it all shakes out at the end of this year. And some will probably get released. There may be things that were covered for that it turned out that were over encumbered and you go back. And this is just normal, end of year. Happens.
It takes over a year.
Yeah.
Out of that end of year for it to really be reconciled.
Yeah, for all those.
Right.
Fall out. And so this, this is a process, but you know, now the days.
Yeah, you know, he's such a slacker.
Yeah, we'd like to have it. We'd like to have it all cleaned up.
Any other questions for Dave? So this is, so I, I think what this is really good about is this really kind of helps lay your budget up, does it not?
It's keeping us on track with this budget, paying close attention to it.
And like I said, we've got a lot of other.
Yeah. Cool. Looking forward to taking.
Thank you.
Any questions from, from those online? All right. So our last agenda item is specifically just to make sure that what is on the referral, it's not really a referral. The, the referral sheet is as we anticipated them to be. There are admissions. Add additions, not admission, but I guess we could admit them, but that would be kind of silly. Add-ons, take, takeoffs. And I'm gonna do Dean and then Jay.
So we talked about joint, that's sort of finance and.
Can, can Jay speak closer to the mic? Thank you.
Sure. It's Dean. The other white guy.
I'll let that go.
My God.
We all look alike.
Oh, my.
Dean. Dean, Dean, gonna cut you off.
So going to Olympic school buses. I know this has been, this has been kicked around. Do we, do we actually want to keep this thing on the referral list? Because we have, do you think we're gonna learn more, say more or what?
And then the purchase of vans.
Yes, you made up.
Okay. So what we did is S T A came in because they had a pilot program going on in one of their districts. And I forget how many buses. And so the reason that I kind of wanted to leave this on here is I would like him to come back. Let us know.
Okay.
What he learned from the, from the world, which they received grants to do with them. And how would it work with the district that's?
I'm also interested in that purchase of a van. We've talked about that. Should we have something in-house? And after this year, looking at these costs and having Mark Ramona reach out to your town facilities like Harks and Rec to borrow one of their smaller vans for the swim team. I think there's going to be some real efficiencies in this, not only coordinating with other town entities that have these vans, but it might be something that we want to entertain some, at some point.
I think we could actually enlarge this to be, you know, as you say, not just the van for specialized, but you know, is there an opportunity to transport the sports teams?
Yeah.
That sort of thing.
So do you want it to add on purchase of vans to transport students and, and get rid of the special ed stu-, special ed?
Yeah, the opportunity to.
Yeah. Okay. So would you?
Yeah.
I would hope that we would discuss, we'd be able to share. We discussed whether like senior center, large vehicles, is there any opportunity for us to partner with them to utilize those? If those are something that they usually use during the day. The opportunity to share that evening. Again, obviously that's. No, no, because my wife is.
I can't hear. I can't hear Jay either.
Right. You didn't miss.
He says you didn't miss much.
I figured that.
This man is down.
So my wife's indicated that the, the use of vans by the senior center for senior center functions has been significantly altered since COVID.
Yeah.
And so we should at least see if there's some conversation.
I, I actually think that in financing facility to see if there could be any, years ago, actually when Bruce Flax was the mayor, he created a committee with the town council and the board of ed to look at shared services. And this sounds like this might be the time to talk about it. We have someone new looking at our finances. We have, things are very different since 2020. It might be worth the board and the town getting to that.
And even on that liaison committee that we have.
But this was like, we met a lot.
I also want to comment on because we discussed this review of the use of PayPal. And I don't know, Dave, if you've been able to find anything regarding to this, but this had to do with student booster clubs and activities coming to the business office and asking for some technical advice about whether they should start to do their fundraising. So it really wasn't something for the finances facilities committee to sort of, but, but they were looking for his technical advice. And at the time that we brought it up on the agenda and we discussed it in the meeting, he said he was going to do more research, but I don't know whether there's anything in the files.
I haven't seen anything, but I will certainly.
And I don't know what the status is of our student groups.
I talked about using eCollect.
Right.
But I'll reference the same thing.
I just recall that when Ken brought it to us, he said that he had been approached. And I don't know if it was a booster or a P T O. I mean, this is a couple of years ago. That they were looking for, you know, should they use PayPal for example? And of course there are now a number of other. And they were looking for some, like some advice.
So do you want that amended or do you want to keep that until you get more history?
I mean, yeah, we. I, I'm curious, you know, are, are, are the P T O still looking for advice on that? Because I think a lot of people are excited on their own.
Okay. So, so what needs to have happened is maybe this needs to go away from the review of the use of PayPal. And maybe, maybe from Susan's staff to kind of ask the, each of the schools to see, do P T Os need? I mean, how are they handling those credit card transactions with A B Y?
I can ask that.
That'd be great.
Best practices for.
Best practices. Because then, and then we would, right. And then you would need to know that. So I am going to, Joan, I don't know if you understood that, but we'll cross out the 25 under financing facilities. Review of the use of PayPal. All right. Anything else?
I'm just, when you're thinking, the third item is discussion of the communication plan. I really haven't spoken about this with Phil, so I'll make a suggestion. Phil, please pipe in if you think of that wrong. Where it says discussion communication plan, the communication plan exists. We've done that. However, part of our, the way we understood it was that we would take an annual look at the communication plan to see if there was anything you'd like to bring to the board. So we can just change it to annual discussion. And Phil, you think June will be a good time for that sometime around June, end of the year?
Yes. And I think we also left it on there, you know, because the committee is gonna have a little overhaul. So we figured that discussion might happen sooner just to incorporate the new board.
That's true too.
Um, okay, but it can also go on the tracker, the yearly tracker sheet. So it can have a place like in June or July that a committee of the whole meeting is set to go over the communication.
Our monthly meetings, when we do something by, you know, twice a year or once a year, we, we've taken them off this sheet and put them on the scheduled agenda sheet. So that keeps.
That's why it's so small.
Yeah.
And we, and with regard to discussion, how to attract families to Groton. We have something we would like to do, but we want to bring it to the board for its approval.
So then that should stay on there or do you want that?
Should stay on there. It's.
Or do you want to move that to the committee of the whole?
No, we're not.
I can discuss that.
Okay.
Within, we need to discuss it.
Right. On Liz.
Breakthrough on Stein. We went over this a couple of months ago and it's been updated. So we're actually in good shape. So take care. We're good. No changes. Phil? Okay.
You're all bandaged.
Yeah. Andrea, how is the policy looking? Do you, on the track, on the, the referral tracking sheet? Oh. We could, we can get rid of the 9,000s.
Yes, we can.
And everything else is okay?
Yes.
Who attended zones? Did we already do that one over there? It says November. I have to check on that. But the other one, as soon as we do a second reading on that, on admission requirements, that's always.
All right. And then the committee of the whole update on one card collaboration. Matthew, that's, but that's on.
It's still in process. To the best of my understanding, how's that for a disclaimer?
Well, it's a tech issue.
It's a tech issue.
On the library site.
Well, they say it's here. Here says it's there. It just needs to be some work between Clint and the library. They're willing to dance.
I thought it was their software that they'd have to change, but I lost Clint.
You know what? I don't know anymore.
And then we have the discussion of artificial intelligence on teaching and learning. I think that that's probably pretty pertinent to keep on. And then discussion of cursive writing, and that was Beverly in June.
Susan, with regard to the artificial intelligence, could you check with Dave and see if that lecture by Justin Reich could be shared with the new board? We just need to send it to their home desk so we can see it. So we have the context for any discussion.
Yeah.
And, and Bev, where are you? We have not yet gotten to your, your cursive writing.
Yeah, I'm still interested in it.
Okay, good. Then it stays. All right.
Before we, before we go, I wanted to say that on Saturday last, we, those Martin Luther King scholars met to write their thank you notes. And there was a, a great interest in, in cursive. And those who could write cursive had, had learned it in third grade. And everybody else was really interested in not, not, the, the discussion was not just about cursive, but about the, the implications for hand eye coordination. It was a rich conversation and that came from kids around the county.
Cool.
Yeah. So Beverly's on target with that. So is it time?
Yes, ma'am, but you, you're not, but you stay on.
Yes, I stay on. Right.
Okay.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Meeting has been adjourned. All right. Thank you, guys.